Central time.
Call to order and establish your call Monday, October twenty first, seven P M. Roll call. Jam?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
I'm here. Deesha?
Here.
Dana?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Will you please join me for the pledges and the prayers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Um. Mister Egan, would you like to lead us in prayer today?
Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we come before thee at this time as a city council and as a community to work together and find a way to build our city and to help create peace and unity. Please bless those who are serving in our community, that they will be strengthened and uplifted. Bless them that they will be able to work out the things that they have on their agendas tonight. Please watch over our community, heavenly father. We're grateful for all that we have and for the beautiful community and the great people that are here, and we pray that thou will bless them as well. And we say this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We move on to citizen comments. No citizen comments at the time. Moving on to section. Six consent agenda, minutes from regular meeting held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I wish to discuss my water bill.
We've already passed that point.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Remove to approve. Section two, minutes for special meetings held on September third, twenty ninth, and thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
I believe I gave y'all for the twenty fourth as well, but I just made a missed typo on there instead of twenty fourth through twenty ninth. It should have been twenty fourth through thirtieth. I put twenty ninth and thirty.
Gotcha. Okay.
We need to hold it to next time.
So these will need to go on the next agenda. Um, we have minutes.
Sixteen.
Uh huh. We have special meeting minutes for September sixteenth. It's not on here, so this will need to be on the next agenda. I don't have minutes for a September third meeting. Does anybody?
I know.
Okay. I think that's what happened, but that's okay.
All right, break that for the next one. We need September third.
The twenty ninth and thirty?
We have a September third. It was a special meeting night. It was a regular called meeting?
No.
Special meeting, special meeting, yeah. It was him. Are there regular minutes? Yeah. Okay, we'll need to put that one on next to each other.
Yeah. Do you have the minutes from the third in yours?
I do.
Okay. It was in the packet, maybe it stuck to another page or something, didn't it?
No. Oh, no, I meant. No, we. I need to put the twenty four coming on November. Nine, three, and nine, sixteen. And then nine twenty four.
Okay.
Okay. No. Yeah. Nine twenty nine.
We got the twenty ninth and thirty, we'll see if we're through.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty ninth and September thirtieth.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to pass. Section three, financial report.
Lisa, can you give us just a quick update on where we're at with the balancing of the accounts and the date everything is in balance through?
Every, all of the accounts, but one of the special accounts has now been balanced up to September.
Okay.
And I'm working on September now.
Okay.
But all the past year is completed.
But our two main operating accounts are completely.
Yes, the two main operating accounts, it's one of the specialized accounts, that's the only one I don't have finished.
Okay.
And I expect to have it done this week now that that inventory is completed.
Sorry, go ahead.
The repair for maintenance under the sewer system, was that a pass through? This three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars? On profit and loss for the water sewer department? Was that?
To be honest, I just ran it off of the books. I couldn't.
Okay, sorry. Did we pay, we, did we have to pay Lance and them for out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all of that one's been paid.
Okay, so it's probably what this is?
Probably what that was.
That's what I figured.
They haven't submitted for the phase two yet.
Right, okay, right. Okay.
So Lisa, do you have an estimate on where we're at in terms of providing information to the auditor for last year and the, sorry, the previous year and last year now?
All of the vague statements has been completed. I just need to know what I need to pull together for them.
Okay.
Our first step will be to ask for an engagement letter from them, and then they'll let you know what to do.
Okay.
It's a lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we know who we want to do the audit from?
McClyon Holmes. Who's done us in the past.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, well. The same as before, I would like to table approval of the financial reports pending receipt of the audit. So I make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We table that and we move on to section four, accounts payable for October twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable for October twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve section five, utility and public works department.
Don't thank his written report.
Right here.
No, it's in your packet.
Oh, it's this one?
The first thing, isn't it?
This from Gordon? Yeah.
No, this is.
This from Caleb? Okay, okay. Public work support for October twenty first, twenty twenty four, regular meeting. I began work on September with a cleanup of top priorities for city property, including City Hall, Wells, One and Two Sewer Plants, and the City Barn. He also cleaned up trash, mowing, and weed eating around it. Started major project on Richard Street and Mill across from the football field. Many small jobs and work orders, including but not limited to locking, unlocking, checking meters, trash can exchanges, and changes to the marquee. Heavy focus on brush and weed clearing at stop signs, power poles, and intersections that need higher visibility. Assisting with Garner Water Solutions with heavy meter inventory, heavy, wait, I'm sorry, y'all. Water meter inventory. Assisted Garner Water as much as he could. Lot of cleanup and beautification for the, in preparation for the twenty mile garage sale, as well as the interior of City Hall. He's been locating water shut-off files, and he's began inventorying all City Hall property. All righty, I believe that's all I'm going to say for this. All righty.
Can you verify that on, we're not in the.
Yeah.
Do you see if you have any questions?
Yeah. It's a, well, I don't see the need to be brought up at a meeting. It's just him asking. I can, I'll talk to him about that later.
Awesome.
Moving on to, oh, there you go.
The volunteer fire departments that they would submit the report next month with the new baby who's.
I do not have a report, yeah.
You, you should.
We do not have a report, but.
We'll have it next month.
We got a new baby, though.
The chief of the fire department, we want to congratulate him on having his firstborn child, and we will continue with the volunteer fire department report as usual, starting next month.
A boy.
It's a boy.
A boy.
It's a boy.
Lightning.
Administration.
That's just, anything you need to share?
I think everything's coming up in this information report. So, move on from that. Moving on to information reports. Trunk or treat will be held on the square, October thirtieth, at five thirty P M. Halloween is October thirty first. We will be holding the elections at City Hall, November fifth. Feeding Fannin is also November fifth. Veterans Day, November eleventh, City Hall will be closed. Thanksgiving holiday, November twenty eighth through twenty ninth, City Hall will be closed. That is all for the information report. Move to old business and discuss consideration. We're moving to old business. Section one, repair of Ford truck, the radiator needs replacing, and then it will need to be inspected. We didn't get it inspected, kicked the tail off itself.
Right.
We have it now, and it'll be fixed.
And the radiator?
Do you have an estimate?
The truck's not drivable until we get the radiator replaced, and I apologize, I have not been able to get a cost on that radiator. I understand it's one of them that's a little bit more expensive because it's the bigger truck. But I will get that for you.
And are we gonna, are we taking it to a shop to have it, or is one of the garments?
Garmin can replace it. We just need to get the parts.
Okay, so we just need.
And they need to check it for any other stuff that needs done, but that's the biggest two things that we're aware of.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to table the repair until we get the cost for radiator.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You move to table that. Next section, new business. Resolution authorizing submission of application to the Texas Department of Housing for home H R A program. Oh, on the next section?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
Not, not there. Resolution twenty four dash ten.
Resolution twenty four dash, dash, ten, dash, twenty one. I can get this. Resolution of the city of LaDonia, Texas, authorizing the award of professional service provider contracts for the homeowner reconstruction assistance program through the Home Investment Partnerships Program Fund from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, T D H C A. I need to read all of it.
Make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty four, ten, twenty one, as published.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve. Moving on to the next section, select administration project delivery services slash construction management services provider to complete project implementation for the homeowner reconstruction assistance program.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four, ten, twenty one, A.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to approve. Moving on to section three. Preliminary approval on subdivision of property on Shelby Lane requested by Mitch Miller.
Everybody should have one of these. If not, I can give you one. So we purchased this from T C Taylor, it's seven acres. We're dividing into seven pieces. They're all one acre apiece except for the middle one because it has a pond and we need to have room for septic system. We'll have minimal restrictions, no mobiles, so tiny homes are okay, stick built, et cetera.
Tiny homes won't be okay with, according to our ordinance. Tiny homes are not okay according to our ordinance.
What, twelve hundred?
One thousand.
Okay, yeah, no, you need, you need one thousand.
That's within city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you checked the ordinance on having septic tanks or versus having to be tied into city utilities?
We'll have water there on the, on the street, but I think it's too far from, because it would be, it would end with you pretty much.
Right, so this property was discussed at one time with Lance Kateford. And because of the way that it sits, because yours is right by you as a lift station, these will have to have septic. They won't be able to tie into our sewer system.
So does the houses down below it don't have?
They all have septic, yeah. There's only one other property as far as I know down that way.
Well, there's technically three, so.
Is there three?
There's Micah, and then Steve's, and Steve's, and then Greg is down at the bottom.
I thought Micah was before him.
And Micah's after?
Mike is.
Was Micah before, oh.
Yeah, Mike, Mike is at the top of the, top of this property.
See, I had it flipped, okay.
Yeah, and then.
And then Greg Morse's was after that, and Steve Taylor's, and then there's one more house on the.
Yeah. They're all septic, yes. Everybody out that way, and then everybody on Country Lane and Fowler are all septic as well.
Yeah.
Well. Is that going to be a problem?
Doesn't this have to go before the zoning board?
Yeah, well, I'm looking, looking at the ordinance right now, and I don't know if this has been certified as complete by anybody so that the council will even see it, so. And, and the ordinance does require some sort of approval by the zoning board, whoever that is.
Which is us, yeah.
But there has to be a certification, I would guess, by the city secretary, that the application is complete, and there's a detail in the ordinance about what that includes. And part of that is, is paying the filing fee, and then the dates for approval start from that date, so. What I have is an application that was taken over the phone, and what appears to be a map has got some parcels laid out on it, which is probably not a plat.
No, definitely not a plat. This is, this is preliminary, not, not final.
Yeah, so I.
And there are issues you guys are discussing that may need to be fleshed out before, before people take back. That will be a planning and zoning commission to flesh that out.
So for planning purposes, for Mister Malam, what's the next step?
I think he needs to come up with, you know, if there's issues here, there needs to be some sort of, what the ordinance calls it, is an informal meeting with either the city staff or the planning and zoning commission to find out exactly what's going to be built. What are the plans? Then there needs to be some sort of certification that he's met the requirements.
We're not building any, we're not building anything. So we're just going to.
You're just wanting just to subdivide?
We're just going to subdivide, and then it will be resolved.
With the restrictions of no manufactured homes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so the, you know, we're going to sell these to individual people to build single family. Since that's what it's sold for.
Is the lots being enough for the?
Yes, ma'am, you have an acre in Texas.
Yes. You don't have to.
There's no, we don't like to have a communication between the crowd that had problems in the past. It's not your fault, and it's not your fault. I understand y'all are just talking, but can we keep that to a minimum here, please?
You bet.
Thank you.
So is there not wanting, if he's not wanting to build, we still probably need to.
Well, you still, you still don't have any idea. He's, he's talking about subdividing the property, and subdividing the property is different than just, we're gonna, we're gonna, and using the ordinance is different than saying, I'm just going to divide these things up and sell them. And that needs to be fleshed out at a, at another location, a different venue. Because what we hear now is he's just going to divide the property up and try to sell the lots off, which is different than I'm going to put in a subdivision out here behind whoever's house it is, so. That needs to be fleshed out, because you guys want to know what's going to be going on out there as much as you can. And this doesn't tell you. There's, this is, it's, it's great that he's here and he's talking about this, but this doesn't let you know what the plans are or any restrictions that you guys want to put on this, if it's sold, about the water, septic systems, the drainage, all that business.
Set up another. We need just a planning and zoning committee meeting, yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we table this until we have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled. Obviously, we'll get in contact with you to let you know when that'll be, to work with you on your schedule, too. Yeah. I'll second that motion.
So to. What is the motion?
Move to table, until we schedule a planning and zoning committee.
All in favor?
Aye. You got to do one of the, we.
We can.
We'll figure it out right now.
We can, yeah.
It's good for everyone. Twenty first.
I'll be gone riskless week. Okay. But it doesn't.
Anybody do anything on the thirty first?
I was like, I actually have plans on. November the fourth, Monday, November the fourth?
Watch for me.
That works. That work for y'all?
Looks good.
Works. At. Does that work for you? Oh, does that work for you? He said yes. What time?
What time can you be here? You tell me.
Five thirty?
A M?
P M.
It's kind of stretched, but I can do it.
At five thirty P M? Monday, November fourth.
What's the date on that?
Monday, November the fourth, at five thirty P M.
We tabled that. We move to the next section. Help for local volunteer firefighters. Anyone want to leave this on? That'd be too loud.
What is it?
For help for, for local volunteer firefighters.
Is there anything on the packet on that?
I don't believe it says anything on it.
Right, so the discussion was to give them some sort of.
Same discount weekend.
Okay.
Same as city council.
Same as city council, so they don't pay for their first two thousand gallons of sewer.
I think that'd be the fairest way to go.
But they have to.
And I want, I think, yeah, but I think Grady should be the one who's in charge of keeping track of that, and it tells you how many.
People?
I don't want to step on the cheese toes.
Right, yeah.
Trying to build a relationship.
I think the hope was to.
Can we?
Redirect, because there's too much chatter in the audience.
Yes, can you?
Guys, can we please keep the chatter down to none in the audience?
Hear us discuss what we're discussing. So say again.
Yeah.
Would you repeat that? Because I don't know that it's. Um, so I get, the discussion was for vol, help for local volunteer firefighters. If they live in town and they pay for sewer, they would get, essentially their first two thousand gallons would be comped off or pay free, just, skinny, just for the sewer. At this time, we only actually have one.
Water, and? He said sewer.
Just sewer.
Just sewer.
Just sewer. And we only have one.
Yeah, we only have one qualifying member.
Oh, there, this is kind of a way that they're trying to see if they can get more interest in people who live locally to help with. Fire department, yeah. And do we have, are we, do we have stipulations, like how many meetings they have to, or how many?
Uh, when it comes to that, like I was saying, is I prefer, and I mean, we can do it however y'all want, but I would prefer to leave that more up to the local, like their chief to decide it. Uh, I don't want to step, I want, we're building a relationship with the fire, rebuilding a relationship with the fire department, and I think letting him make those kind of decisions, I think he's trustworthy and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think he'll do us right.
Well, before he goes and tells them, I think it needs to be approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I don't think that they should be.
It won't just be him, obviously. I think it should be, he'll bring us what he thinks is right, and we'll decide then if that's a good idea or not.
Okay. So for whatever the requirements are.
Yeah, for the requirements, me and, me and Grady will get to, get in touch and talk about it beforehand.
Right, and so then after that, the chief will certify their monthly waiver, if you will?
Yes, sir.
And that waiver provides what?
Uh, it'll provide.
First two thousand gallons of sewer comped off of their bill.
G gallons of sewer.
I'm sorry?
Of sewer. Not water?
No.
No, not water.
Just sewer.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that it's explicit, so.
I didn't make any motion. I think that's what was, we were discussing what was discussed. Uh, Russell's going to be writing the motion.
I'm trying to.
I think Russell's trying to word it.
Okay, so I make a motion that, based on the LaDonia Volunteer Fire Department Chief's monthly certification of waiver for an individual LaDonia Volunteer Fire Department volunteer, the first two thousand gallons of sewer will be waived on that individual's bill.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you move to pass.
Lisa's going to want a copy of that.
Okay, well, you're going to have to get it off the recording.
All right, you already move on to section five?
Yes.
Donation of sound system for city council members from Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia.
Eddie Frazier to make that presentation.
So, finally. We have an agreement within the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia. I'm here representing them today, tonight. We've agreed that we want to purchase the sound system that has been discussed for the last few months here. It's a, it's a very significant system that has hearing impaired. All the microphones you'll ever need. Uh, I think it'll serve the city for a long time, and it's, Chamber of Commerce is willing to donate. We do have one request, or caveat, I don't know what you wanna call it. The, there's concern that, um, c- city councils get elected in and out. So we would like some assurance. You can tell us how the best way to do this is, that the system must remain in use by the city and the system must be maintained by the city. Otherwise, the system must be returned to the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia. So, putting it in other words, we don't want it transferred and we don't want it sold. If it's not gonna be used here for the people of Ladonia, we want it back.
Is that a contract you can draw?
Sure. It's called reversionary. I got it. Good.
Thank you.
Can we accept that with a basic motion and have you draw that agreement in?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the sound system, uh, recommended by the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia. With the caveat that the system must remain in use by the city, and the sys- system must be maintained by the city. Otherwise, the system must be returned to the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to approve.
And we will, we will get it, the stuff ordered and get it headed this way.
Section six. Section six, authorization to purchase materials needed for daily operations of water, sewer, and streets. Up to five thousand dollars when items are in the approved budget. So this is just stuff we've already approved, and it's asking us to, um, just go ahead and.
Not stuff we've already approved.
Well, it says when items are approved in budget.
Right, it means that we have the money in our budget to cover it, right?
This is for emergencies. For instance, when we have these major water breaks. We've got to be able to get the pipes and the clamps to, to do the repairs right away. We can't wait several days to get the approval and to go buy the stuff to, to get it done. I mean, we're losing thousands of gallons an hour when this happens.
Right, yep.
Yes, so philosophically, we have approved the expenditure of this money already. And instead of wasting water and wasting time to allow the mayor, based on the fact that the council has approved the budget. To approve the purchase of those supplies as needed.
Correct.
Or to inventory supplies as needed.
Yep, that's. That's a.
So, so effectively, Garmin would come with the, what they need, and Justin can give the A and A right in and there. Okay? Wanna make that motion? I will make the motion to approve authorization to purchase materials needed for daily operations for water and sewer. And streets up to five thousand dollars when items are in the approved budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to pass. Moving to section seven, automated water meter system from Underground Utility Supply.
Like, thank you councilmen tonight for allowing me to come by and show what we presently use in our industry. Known as AMR, Automatic Meter Read System. A lot of the meters that you already have in your system is adaptable to this. The history behind AMR that we worked into the industry was that one of the most expensive things that we have today is labor. So what we're trying to do is efficiently read the meters and the usage in such. So that they can get the job done, get the information back to the city secretary, water clerk, so that the bills can be done. The normal way for doing it, truck, go to each meter, read it, and it's handwritten. Or punched into a handheld type computer. And we're trying to cut down on the human factor also. The system reads it through a laptop device that is mobile. It's incorporated within a black carrying case. I've only got one copy, I'm sorry about that. That allows us to read the meters in a drive-by situation. And in that, it's the legal speed limit of the city. Just drive around. The computer collects the readings from the meter, it transmits the reading off of the meter into the laptop. And then, once they're read through this carrying case. Then we transfer that information into your billing software, which allows the bills to be done. One of the big issues that we've come across many years is that it's a safety issue. Uh, for some reason, snakes, black widows, um, dogs like to get after meter reading people. And this is workman's comp. It just causes us more trouble. So by being able to read this meter electronically, which you cannot hack this, there is no computer involved in this. The only way to read the meter is with the approved equipment. So, that's where our accuracy comes from, is from the meters themselves. We, we use a multi jet meter, which is one of the sensitive meters in the industry. There's what is called positive displacement multi jet. Uh, the whole item that we're looking for, the state is requiring us to keep tabs on our water usage. We've gotta read our wells, they wanna know our water usage is, because they're very uptight about where we're using our water. So they want to be with the best accuracy in order to read these meters that our citizens are using. There are several different things about these type of meters. They're sometimes referred to as smart meters. We have the ability to help the customer by letting them know when there's a leak. If water runs through the meter for twenty-four hours continuous, it sets off a leak alarm. Which in the billing, once we do the billing, we can notify the customer. Our records show that you have a possible leak, and as I say, these meters read down to a quarter of a gallon of water to go through them. So we're trying to be as low as we can to help the citizens maintain their water usage also. Within it also, we have the ability, what we call data log. That if there is a question of the bill, then we can go out with the computer and pull up four thousand readings. Off of this meter. That's four thousand hours. Most of the time, we go back forty-five days, the current billing cycle for our meters. We can't tell you where the water went, but we can tell them approximately what time the water went through the meter. Uh, sometimes, I've been guilty of this, I've left a sprinkler running all night long. And what this does is provide us with that information. You leave somebody in charge of your house while you're on vacation, they leave it on, and then they come back and shut it off. But it gives the city council, the water department, and the citizens more accurate read on their meters. Our system is unique in the fact that it has no wires. There's nothing to cut, there's nothing to damage. All the electronics is incorporated inside of this. The range of this unit is two hundred and fifty feet up to fifteen hundred feet. So that allows us to read two streets over. I don't know what the approximate time is it takes to read the meters in the city. I don't know if the water department can help me with that, but. How many days?
Several days.
Several days. This cuts it down to hours, because you're not driving down every street to read the water meters, it's reading within that range. So, it transmits every ten seconds, and it just literally does a burst. It gives the reading off the top of the meter. One of the other, other things that, about the unit, we have analog dial. That if for some reason electronics fails, and like, electronics never fails, right? We could still go back and read this meter if we have to. The citizen can read the meter. They can see what's being used through the meter. So, this is an aid in our ongoing process. Of trying to keep a better handle on our water. And plus, it cuts down on labor, fuel cost. As I say, all of these things are a big factor within a city. We're trying to lower our cost. Each one of you have a quote in front of you. There's a special program that Master Meter allows us to do. Underground is the distributor for Master Meter in this area. So once we start with this initial program, and they allow us, these meters normally sell for two hundred and forty-five dollars each. And I believe on this one, it's like a hundred and sixty-one dollars and cents. This is a special program that the cost is cut way down, to help a city get started. After this initial program is done, you can purchase a box of meters a month. You don't have to buy the whole program at once. And within our system, it's not only five eighths, but it's up to one inch meters, two inch meters. It makes us no difference, because every meter in Master Meter is adaptable to the system. The only thing you have to do, your billing software is RBS, I believe. The only thing you have to do is make sure you get with RBS. They have a program. That ha- I don't know how old your software is at the time being. But most billing software all has the ability to, to import, export files. So, that's only requirement that we say is that RBS provide y'all with that. It, it used to be seven hundred and fifty dollars, I'm not sure, but a lot of, a lot of the software has it incorporated in it now. So, once we read the meters, it gives you the ability to check the readings and then transfer it over to billing. And because it's all done electronically, there is no human factor, so we're trying to cut her time down. She doesn't have to manually input anything anymore. And as I say, the meter readers, they can get out there and read the system and get it in as quick as possible. Because we need to try to get our bills done and get that information out.
And that's also, uh, helpful during bad weather too.
Yes, yes.
During that time.
If, if we got into a bad weather situation, a- as I say, this allows us to read the meter without physically getting out and getting. One of the issues, for a long time, people had fences around their yard and the meter was in the fence. And sometimes, we have big bad dogs that allows us not to read the meter. This allows us to read the meters without interfering with the homeowner's property. All we need is access to the meter box. Uh, the unit, there is no programming it. When you get it, it's ready to go. You put it in, it turns itself on after fifty gallons of water. So that is, is no special training there, the reading of the system. We do it through the cloud. Now, everything is done through the web. So once she downloads the route to the cloud, we download it into the laptop. The meter reader hits start radio, and that's it. You drive. It reads the system, and it tells you how it's working, how many meters it's reading. It'll tell you leak alarms, uh, tamper alarms, counterclockwise alarms. And all this is to help us with our, our water system, to help keep track of what's going on out there. And then once they're through, they come back, download it back through the cloud, she receives it. Does what she needs to within the software, and then transfers it on to billing for billing of the water usage. There is no set route. You can go backwards, you can go forward, it makes no difference. Once it's put in, as I say, the meter reader will simply hit start radio. And within the box, the receiver is an RF receiver. Everything is in the case, it's got a magnetic mount antenna, so we can move it from truck to truck, power source. It uses a CF fifty-five Panasonic laptop, which is one of the tough books. So it's designed to be of rugged use. Everything in it is designed to be moved around. So once they're through to read meters, they package it up. It looks like a gun case. Close it up, bring it in here, and it stays inside City Hall. Only time we use it out in the truck is when we're reading meters, or we go do a data log to pull that information up. For knowing what happened within the, the metering system at that time. So as I say, any meter is adaptable to this system. The only part of it that's wired is the big meters, because sometimes they're in vaults, and they're full of water, so we have to get the electronics up out of the water. But the everyday-to-day meter, which is the five eighth three-quarter meter, it's a matter just having this register in it. And all the inventory is kept in Longview, Texas, so when y'all need something, we deliver with that, what, whatever other material that y'all might be using. We're full line stocking distributor for y'all. We do your clamps and pipe and meter boxes, everything. So anything we can do to help you, that's what we're here for. Questions?
Yep. So here, there are a lot of houses that are in floodplain areas. And anyway, long story short, the meters end up covered in mud, silt every month, no matter what. How's that affect that?
That's the reason I say two hundred and fifty feet up to fifteen hundred feet. We read through fi- through dry dirt, that's not a problem. When we get wet, mud situation, it does cut the signal down. The worst-case scenario is a cast iron box, cast iron lid. Full of water and mud. That's the only thing that hurts us. In those occasions, we might have to drive closer to the meters to read them. But on a normal reading, we're looking at fifteen hundred feet, such as that.
What's the life expectancy of the electronic?
There is a warrant, there's a twenty-year warranty on this meter. There's ten years unconditional and ten years pro-rated. The only thing that's not covered is if the glass is broke or the casing is damaged. If it doesn't transmit, it doesn't pull a memory, it goes different readings. And when you're dealing with electronics, all those things can happen. When that happens, because I come around every two weeks or a thirty-day period. You would simply hand me that register, and I take care of all the paperwork. I send it off, we get a replacement, it comes back. Let's say that we're five years into the system and we have bad registers. The registers they send you will pick up the warranty of the existing register. That's how all warranties work. But the, the ten-year unconditional is, it covers everything about this register that can possibly go wrong with it. And, uh, I've got systems that are fifteen years old. Delta County Mud uses it, uh, Shady Grove Sud, City of Campbell uses it, Miller Grove Water. Uh, there are some in City of Silver Springs, which we're looking to upgrade their system. City of Faith, I mean, we have sixty-seven systems alone in East Texas that we provided this system with. Everything from, we just went to the City of Winfield and City of Como, three hundred meters. And then we've gone up as high as thirty-five thousand, which is what City of Longview is. And so, the systems have been around fifteen-plus years, and the technology is tested. And it's, it's well-used in the state of Texas and East Texas especially. We have a lot of people who use it.
Okay, I have, uh, I have two questions. One, and I'm sure we've talked about this before, but forgive me, I've slept since then. Do y'all handle the installation of it, uh, without it falling in the city?
I'm a distributor only. Th- that's one of the reasons we sell it like we do. Is that on the initial hundred registers, you put them where, meters, you put them wherever you want to. And then after that, when you buy a box, now, we can sell it to you all at once. I have no complaints of that. But in order to work with cities and keep the cost down, and, because y'all got other things you've gotta deal with. But at least this gets you started. Once you have the laptop and the software in place, everything else is at sheer convenience.
Okay. And we've had, uh, problems in the past with, with, uh, locking our water meters. Would, I'm not sure how it would work, cause it's all electric.
It's not, it's not that piece that gets locked.
No. They tried a system a few years ago, they put a valve with the meter. Uh, it didn't work real well. After about a year, it got to where it turned itself off and on. After about a year, it got to where it turned itself off and on, and they're scrapping most of that. That technology they're working on, it is not available yet.
Okay.
Because the, the batteries that this uses, there is no changing the batteries on this. The batteries that is used in this is a three-volt, they look like two double-A batteries, but this battery is, has its own website manufacturing, the government uses it, uh, life expectancy is anywhere from eight years to fifteen years. It's one of those chalkboard things that they write it up on a formula. I have meters that lasted eight years, and I've got meters in the Dallas area that we're pulling the registers out that are fifteen years old. So, it's, it's hard to explain that, how two things can be made exactly alike, side by side, and this one that lasts a long time and this one lasts a year. I mean, it's, it's hard to determine that.
Okay.
Is there any data available on that replacement cost, projection, cities that have been using that meter for more than a, how, how old are those meters, or the technology that's used?
Technology, this technology's over fifteen years old.
So, there should be some data on how, how the average failure?
Is, is what we look at as far as replacement in that eight to fifteen-year period. As I say, uh, there's good reliable sources on this to where, and, and I can get you those customers and, to the mayor, and he can call, I, I love it when they call and say, just, how do you like the system? And like I say, Matt at Delta County Mud has it, um, Jeremy down at Shady Grove, uh, Clayton has it.
I love, I love the technology. I want to know next year when we budget for the water department, what expenses we need to plan for, for replacements of standard, right?
The cost of the meter outside of this program is two hundred and forty-five dollars.
But you don't have to replace the full meter, you just replace the register, correct?
Right, if anything goes wrong with the register, you just, there is a pin that goes in here that this locks, right here.
Okay.
Okay, and it turns, you pop the pin in, you take the register out, you lay the new register in, put the shroud back on, put the pin back in.
Okay.
Then, the nice thing, you have some of these meters already, in what we call direct read.
Okay.
They're, they're just a ordinary meter. All we have to do on those is pull this, pop it off, put the register in. The register by itself is two hundred and seventeen dollars. The whole meter is two hundred and forty-five dollars. All the money's in the electronics.
Yeah.
This by itself is seventy-nine dollars, the brass meter in a direct read is seventy-nine dollars, and this meter's two hundred and forty-five dollars. So, that's the advantage that the system has, is the fact that the ease of changing this out, um, if it happens, pop the shroud off of it, pull the register out, replace it, and we recommend that you keep at least five registers on hand, because if one fails, you've got replacement inventory right there. The register you give me, I have to send off to Master Meter, which is in Mansfield, Texas, they're not in Indiana or up north, they're in Mansfield, Texas, the plan is. They evaluate the register, they send us back a register, my people bring it to you. There is a whole lengthy piece of paper that you have to fill out, explain what happened to the register and all of this, they send in RMA number back to us, and we do, we do all the paperwork for you, this is one of the advantages that as a distributor we did years ago, and we started it and we just keep doing it.
And that's ten years?
Twenty years, ten years unconditional with a ten-year pro-rate.
Okay, and twenty years for...
Twenty years.
Okay.
I could tell you thirty years and all that, some of these meter manufacturers, but they have ten years unconditional.
Unconditional, okay.
Right, I go by ten years, because the, the state recommends that meters be changed out at five years or seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, because they're getting real picky about water. This, this meter base right here has been accelerated tested to one point four million gallons and still within standards of a used meter. So, at ten years, I recommend that the whole thing be changed out, because as, water is one of the most abusive things we have, it can cut quarter-inch steel, half-inch steel by ten thousand pounds per square inch. So, things wear out through this meter, and so what we recommend is that as it slows down, you're losing the capacity to keep up with the water, your water loss goes up and the state wants to know why your water loss is up. They allow so much for leaks, such as that, flushing, they have accounts for that, but at the point you two account, even now, they want to know how much water you flush, and they'll ask you on leaks, how much water did you lose on leak every month? And then they come back and they want to know what your age of your meters are and what you're doing to increase the accuracy of water usage within the city. The state's getting very picky on this.
Lisa, how many current active, or approximately current active meters do we have, do you know?
Approximately three hundred and four, four hundred and four.
Okay. And then this promotional process only till December thirty-first of this year?
And only up to the first one hundred meters?
Yeah.
Only for a hundred meters, because they're selling the meters at basic cost.
Okay.
So, it's, I have no control over this, they tell me what they do.
Well, yeah.
They, they have actually cut this back to sixty meters, but because we did this before they did that, they're honoring our deal, they've actually cut it back to sixty meters now.
Okay.
I'm not saying it, but that's true. I actually confirmed that today before I got...
I think there, thank you, good information.
Yeah.
I think there are additional pieces of information that we need to take into consideration, because we approve this and then find out it's gonna cost half a million dollars to install it, which I know it won't, but, right, I mean...
Did that be on Garmin install?
Well, I mean, it'd have to be, we don't have anyone else who can't.
Mr. Garmin, would you be the one installing these meters?
Yes.
And would it be an additional cost to the city?
Yes.
I think we should get to this before, just my opinion, before we make a decision here, we should get with Mr. Garmin.
This is an measure twice situation, for sure.
I agree too.
Yeah.
I will be available for any questions.
Yeah.
Thank you, we do appreciate it.
I don't need your call.
Okay. I think you've got one.
Yeah.
He does, for sure.
I did it to my woman.
I'll get another one, thank you. I've got that.
And I know she has my number.
Yeah, any additional information that y'all need, just contact me and we'll get it to you ASAP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'll get out of y'all's way, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I do think this is something we need to act on, but I'd make a motion that we table this until the November meeting.
I think that's...
And I'll second that, that way we can meet with...
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
We move to table that until the next meeting, moving on to the next section adjourned.
I, I have one question, are you looking at the road people in the city to buy these meters, or is the city buying these meters?
What do you mean, see, you think for...
Are you looking at the, the customers buying it, or the city buying it?
It would be the city, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion we adjourn at seven fifty-eight PM. Second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the total.